Michael Bender is not here. Megan Juflis is online, okay. And Jay Byers? No, okay, and Dennis Sully Mary Jr. is here. And I will see Dennis for Douglas. Let's go through the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for September 18th to September 25th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for September 18th and September 25th.
Thank you. I'll second that. All right. Any discussion? Any issues, any omissions? Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. No correspondence. So we're going to go right into the community input session, but before we do that, we do have Jennifer Downey from Economic Development with us. And-
Lauren Pavlos from the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Lauren Pavlos-
Lauren.
From Conservation. And online, if we can just get you to go off mute and announce your name, I would appreciate that. Robert Friedman?
Yes. Right. Bob Friedman here.
Aaron from CBA.
Okay. Aaron from CBA. Anyone else? And Michael Bender. Very good. All right. With all that, we will, and we have Robert. I can't see the last name from this distance.
Platkowski?
Platkowski?
Platkowski.
Platkowski. You're going to put out your own name, Robert.
Get that unmuted. Yep. Hello. My name is Robert Piotkowski with WSP and will be joining Megan in the presentation.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. So we're going to presentation, Community Input Session on Thriving Communities Transit-Oriented Development Vision Plan. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Megan Juflis, Deputy Director of RiverCog.
Thank you. And I just wanted to check, is, we're expecting Anne as well, Anne Nevins. I don't know if she's in.
I think it might be Zach.
Oh, is it Zach?
Yeah.
One or the other? In online.
Yeah, okay.
So you want to promote her as a panelist?
Yes.
Yes, please. And Anne with your, with River Cog?
No, we have Zach.
We have Zach.
Zach's sitting in for Anne.
Okay, okay, okay. And Rob, are you sharing the presentation?
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, sorry, other Rob. My apologies. Great. So if everyone can see the screen, I can go ahead and get us started. So hi, everyone. I know most of you. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk with you about RiverCog's Transit-Oriented Development Vision Plan. I'm wearing my other hat today, just like at our last meeting. As my day job, I am Deputy Director of the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, also known as RiverCog. We are the regional planning organization for all of Middlesex County plus Lyme and Old Lyme. I'm also joined by our consultants from WSP and Accelerator for America, who I will let introduce themselves once I hand things over. Before I do, I'll start us off with a brief overview of the project before we turn things over to the consultant team to lead the discussion. So as you can see on the slide, this Transit-Oriented Development Vision Plan is a regional effort that involves many partners. All up on the screen, RiverCog is the lead organization with the towns of Clinton, Westbrook, and Old Saybrook, as well as the city of Middletown and Hope Partnership as our community partners. We also have a four consultant capacity building team from WSP, Accelerator for America, also Miranda Creative, who's leading our public engagement, and Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates, who's doing our wastewater capacity study. Next slide. So this Transit-Oriented Development Plan is made possible through the Thriving Communities Program, which is a new program out of USDOT that provides technical assistance and capacity building support to communities that are looking to implement transformative infrastructure projects. RiverCog is a Thriving Communities Program participant. That's why we're the lead. And WSP and AFA make up our awesome capacity building team. And we are part of a nationwide cohort of 14 communities working to advance equitable transit-oriented development, as well as improve safe, reliable, and accessible transit service. And I believe there's a QR code. We can send these around, and they're also on the RiverCog website if you want to see more about the Thriving Communities Program on the slide. Next slide, please. So through the Thriving Communities Program, RiverCog and the team are working with Clinton, Westbrook, Old Saybrook, and Middletown to create a transit-oriented development plan that will enhance multimodal connectivity and promote walkable, compact, and mixed-use development near the region's three Shoreline East stations, as well as the Middletown Bus Terminal. The concept, which you can see on the slide in that graphic there, is to encompass three levels of transit-oriented development. The first is the transit hub, which you see with the T in pink. And those are the areas within a half-mile radius of the transit station. And that's what most people typically think of when they think of transit-oriented development. The second level is the local destination. That's the little icons in green. And these are places in the municipality that would benefit from better connectivity to the transit hub. So when people are getting on a train or a bus, or getting off the train or the bus, a lot of them are going to somewhere and coming from somewhere. And we want to know where those places are so that we know that those are the places that need to be better connected by all modes of travel to the transit station. And then lastly, because we are a regional agency, we're also looking at the regional links between our transit hubs, how they relate to each other, and how they relate to the greater region and in and out of the region. And that's shown in blue. Although today, we're predominantly focusing on those pink icons, as well as maybe a little bit of the green. That's our focus. And next slide. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob to carry on with more information.
Great. Thanks, Megan. Again, my name is Rob Piotkowski. I'm a lead urban designer at WSP and working with Megan and the rest of the capacity building team and RiverCog on advancing this Thriving Communities Program effort. Quick agenda. We'll go through the project overview, touch on what TOD is, explain what we've learned so far. And then I'll pass it over to Zach to share a little bit on some stakeholder input and on SEDs. And from there, we'll have some time for discussion as needed. So to start off with, what is a TOD Vision Plan? It's a guiding document that will provide a framework for transit-oriented development and the implementation steps needed for getting there. And as Megan described, we are looking at three levels of TOD planning. And this vision plan will encompass those three, from the transit hubs to the local destinations and the regional connections. And the vision plan is a shared vision, so it's built with input from you all and the communities. It'll focus on the three levels, and it'll also include a pathway forward. So it's not just a vision, but it's some steps for implementation on how to get there. And lastly, it's not a transit plan. It's thinking holistically about how transit and land use work together in order to create special kinds of places, which are transit-oriented developments. We're in our end of the existing condition in TOD capacity analysis phase, and also moving forward with our TOD framework phase of the project. We had our first community workshop over the summer. These are a lot of the slides from that event. And we'll have a second community workshop, as well as an open house to share our final results as we move forward with TOD framework preparation, implementation strategies, and creating the final report. We have a project website, which Megan alluded to, river cog.org/plan/tod, which has a lot of great information, a lot of which is also in this PowerPoint. And we had a survey that was available to the public, and we've received over 150 responses from that. Which is pretty great. Now we'll talk a little bit more about what a transit-oriented development is and what it means for Old Saybrook. Transit-oriented development is a way of building neighborhoods that centers public transit in the community. And it's about connecting people to jobs, food, healthcare, education, housing, green space, and more. And these communities are designed to be vibrant, pedestrian-oriented, compact, and mixed-use. So they're typically within walking distance of a transit station. Those are those pink circles that we were referring to. It's usually a five or 10-minute walk, or quarter mile to half mile. They're diverse with a mix of uses, including a variety of housing types, offices, retail, other commercial. They're compact. They bring more activities closer together, which allows them to be more accessible from transit, as well as for people to walk from one activity to another. And to facilitate that walkability, they also tend to include complete streets, which are streets that are designed for all users and abilities, as well as high-quality public spaces for people to gather. TOD is important for a variety of reasons. And recent surveys shows that those polled found that these are some of the key reasons and that why TOD was important, some of the benefits that they get from it. These include reducing dependency on driving, allowing residents to live, work, and play in the same area, reducing an area's carbon footprint or other negative impacts on the environment, providing better access to life services, stimulating the local economy, providing better access to entertainment and recreational services, providing access to better jobs, and revitalizing urban areas. Planning for TOD is really a coordinated effort between land use and transportation planning, as well as folding in housing, public amenities, economic development, and of course, transit. And this really is about promoting a mix of uses, focusing on infill and brownfield real development. The areas we're looking at today have all been developed at some point. It's not greenfield sites. Manage parking effectively, designing streets for all, creating engaging public spaces, and exploring opportunities for public-private partnerships or other innovative funding sources. It's also important to remember that one size does not fit all. While the planning process for transit-oriented development is similar from place to place, the actual vision has to be tailored to the local community. And transit-oriented development takes a lot of different shapes and sizes. And we'll share some examples in just a little bit. We've done a lot of analysis so far. We reviewed previous plans and studies. We did a whole host of existing conditions assessments, as well as a TOD capacity analysis, performed a market demand analysis, studied local examples, and did stakeholder interviews. Existing conditions assessment looked at connectivity, land use, planned developments, ownership, zoning, and environmental constraints. And we took these different layers, combined with what we heard from different interviews, and created opportunities and constraints maps. These synthesize existing condition studies and all the information we've heard so far to see where there's key connections, key potential connections, main streets, retail, and to start better understanding what the conditions are like today and where opportunities may arise in the future for transit-oriented development. So as we talked about before, we took a look at some local examples to uncover lessons learned. And we looked at two. And while they're very different from one another and may not apply directly to Old Saybrook, we could learn some valuable lessons for them and as well, you know, see which elements may be applicable to Old Saybrook and just get inspired for what may be possible through transit-oriented development. First example I want to share is transit-oriented development in Darien, Connecticut. They have two stations along their rail line here, Metro North. And they're advancing transit-oriented developments within walking distance of both those stations and within their downtown. Their projects are at multiple scales. Some are very small infill types of projects, basically on one parcel or a portion of one block to larger redevelopments of strip malls or shopping centers. One of the goals was to bring new vibrancy in local destinations to their downtown, as well as expand housing choice and price points. Something unique about what they've been doing in Darien, Connecticut is that their architecture and massing of their buildings really celebrates the coastal New England local architecture. And they've also been able to create some new public gathering spaces, including town squares and shopping streets. This is what it looks like in Darien for transit-oriented development. They have a variety of uses in these different projects, from local shops and services to restaurants and national brands. And above these, you have a mix of residential, as well as office uses. They also are advancing TOD at a variety of scales, tailored to the specific context. Sometimes they're small buildings, shown in the upper-left image. This is just one parcel, and it's just a smaller two-story building that fits in. On the right is a building that's somewhat larger, part of a multi-building planned development. And on the bottom-left corner is a larger project that was part of a shopping center redevelopment. And when we're thinking and talking about transit-oriented development, it's important to remember that it can be any one of these three, or any combination of these three, or something in between. So it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's really what works for your community. And while these places are oriented to transit and promote walking, they do accommodate parking and driving, because that's a necessary part of most people's daily lives. So in the projects in Darien, Connecticut, their transit-oriented developments do accommodate and effectively manage parking. So here they have parking that's on street, parking that's concealed in a garage, and parking that's located mid-block, meaning that it's behind the buildings. So it's there, easily accessible, but not viewed from the public street or parks. They've also created some new engaging public spaces, such as this small plaza. So by creating these two buildings with well-designed facades and having the plaza in the middle, they've really created a place that is popular and hosts a variety of events, as well as the adjacent businesses make use of it throughout the course of the week. And as we mentioned, complete streets. One component of that is wide and active sidewalks. So here, the sidewalks are wide enough for people to walk side by side or for two people in wheelchairs to pass one another. And they're also activated, meaning that the sidewalks are aligned with buildings that have windows and doors. You can see inside, see the businesses, and it's not long expanses of blank walls or parking. But it's something a little more interesting, a little more comfortable, and a little more engaging for those that are passing by on the sidewalks. And if we zoom out to take an aerial view of the downtown area, we can see how these pieces start fitting together for this community. In the top middle, we have the transit station. And then you can see some of these smaller infill projects that kind of replaced some little spaces, as well as one where they've created a new little plaza. And at the bottom, the Corbin District is one of their larger, newer mixed-use transit-oriented development projects. And from a ground level, this can have a beneficial impact on the experience of the pedestrian and those in the downtown. This is Darien's Main Street, which is US-1, Boston Post Road, which continues over to this area. And this is the view in 2012. And today looks similar, but we can see a new building here on the right, which is an example of transit-oriented development that has been tailored to this community. So it matches the scale and character and helps create a space that's engaging for their community. The next example I wanted to share is Meriden, Connecticut. And this is a very different community with different needs and different goals for the transit-oriented development projects that they were advancing. So here, transit-oriented development is located in their downtown, within walking distance of the Amtrak and Hartford Line Station. Their focus was on attainable housing. And how they incentivized and really moved their projects forward was by leveraging public investment in station enhancements, as well as the creation of a new public park to spur private investment. Their station was, obviously transit is a key component of transit-oriented development. And so having the station accessible for all users, as well as easily found from those in the surrounding area. They've provided the public funding upfront to create a station that was worthy of their downtown and one that is very functional. They've also created new public spaces to support private investment, such as a large new town green. And even here, we can see in the back, the new mixed-use building with affordable housing has been built surrounding the new investment in the public park, which serves the larger area. And in Meriden, they prioritized a variety of housing types and choices. On the left, they have a variety of missing-middle types of housing. And on the right, they have the more traditional downtown residential above retail mixed-use buildings. And their focus was on prioritizing a variety of housing prices. And with that, I'll transition over to Zach to talk about a little more that we learned from the SEDs and then from the stakeholder input.
Thank you, Rob. I'm Zach Edson, filling in for my colleague Anne Nevins. And I serve as Program Manager for Infrastructure at Accelerator for America. We're a nonprofit working with mayors and local governments across the country to advance projects related to economic mobility, transit and infrastructure, and workforce development. And before jumping in, I'd just like to thank Megan and the RiverCog team for all the great work they've been doing, as well as the Planning Commission for having us here tonight. All right. So for those that may not be as familiar with the comprehensive economic development strategy or SEDs, we wanted to put together a few of the highlights up here just to be able to do some level setting in terms of what some of those key findings were and about where the region stands today from an economic development perspective. So for starters, the population as a whole is declining and aging. So that means more residents are relying on retirement income, and few young residents are staying or moving to the region. That, I think, is something that you would like to see shift going forward. But on the bright side, employment seems to have recovered from the pandemic and does continue to grow, although somewhat slowly. This is another aspect that I assume we would like to see grow at a more rapid pace going forward. Relatedly, it's important that the economic recovery post-pandemic is inclusive and supports all residents in the community. And another aspect of this finding is that there's been more resilience on, more reliance, excuse me, on self-employment. I think a really key data point from this perspective is that most of the workers for the businesses that are located within the region actually come to work from outside of the region. And that most residents who live here commute to jobs in other regions. And based on some of those demographic trends that we talked about, this is likely only to continue to grow unless we see something shift. So a couple of the key solutions or opportunities to look at would be increasing the supply of affordable housing, as well as improving the transit connectivity. Hence the clear tie to the mission and vision for this Thriving Communities Initiative with RiverCog and the cities involved. Also, the focus on environmental sustainability in terms of development or adaptive reuse or redevelopment is something that I think is very important, given some of the environmental sensitivities in many of the sites and locations, especially as we get closer to the shoreline. Next slide, please.
Zach, can I ask a question on the previous slide?
Yes, yeah, please, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. My name's Dennis, by the way. On your bullet point regarding the commuting both in and out of the area, does your data as detailed as to say, for instance, it's my impression that much of the commuting outside the area is for better, higher-paying jobs, which then allows you to afford to live in the area where the commuters coming into the area are maybe looking at service sector jobs, which is difficult then to afford to live in the area?
Yes, yes. So that's exactly it. It's mostly service-based, you know, professions that are requiring transit outside of that region due to affordability and whatnot.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. So in June, we met with several community leaders and stakeholders in Old Saybrook via Zoom to ask about their experience and visions with regards to TOD and their community. Throughout this discussion, there were five key points that we heard reiterated regarding TOD in this community. And those key takeaways were that Old Saybrook is a hub for the region, attracting people from surrounding smaller communities for shopping, services, and tourism. And improving transit connectivity to and within Old Saybrook is important for serving both residents and visitors. Another one of the takeaways was that the Shoreline East train is great for bringing tourists from Boston and New York to Old Saybrook. But once they arrive, it can be challenging for them to get around to key destinations without a car due to some of the limited transportation options and frequency of service. So thinking on-demand transit with, you know, something like Uber or Lyft. Third takeaway was that Old Saybrook has invested significantly in sidewalks to enable walkability. Main gaps are being addressed, but improving pedestrian safety in the busy downtown and potentially adding bike infrastructure are opportunities. So going back to what Rob had said about, you know, complete streets and making sure that they're safe and accessible for all users. Another one of the takeaways or key points, the extra mile on-demand micro-transit service has been popular and serves an important role. But expanded hours of operations are needed, especially in the summer, and greater awareness among potential users is definitely needed. Overall, Old Saybrook has a solid foundation to build a more connected multimodal community. But strategic expansions of service and creative ways to fill key gaps will be essential to realizing the vision. Stakeholders expressed appreciation for existing transit services and an eagerness to partner on raising awareness and developing solutions to those needs that they had identified. Next slide.
Great. Thank you, Zach. I think that brings us to our end.
Yes.
Great. So with that, I know there's a lot of information, but we're happy to have conversation or answer questions you may have, or if you don't have the answers today, to find them for you and report back.
So Nick Prevost with the Planning Commission. What do we expect to come out of this? Is there going to be a plan, anything specifically identified that we could do moving forward? Or really just ideas?
Yeah, that's a good question. Do you want to go, Anne, or Megan?
Sure. I can start, and you can fill in if I'm missing anything. So the idea would be we're coming out of this with a plan document that has, first, our vision for what we would like the area around the train station to look like and where those key destinations are, and then a set of implementation steps for how we could get from where we are now to that vision being realized, as well as some potential funding mechanisms in order for us to realize those implementation steps. And as a whole, each, so as a whole, we'll end up with basically four vision plans, one for each of the stations. So Old Saybrook will have its own, but it will be packaged as a regional transit-oriented development vision plan, and they'll all be kind of tied together.
Yeah.
And I know Clinton's already started with some apartments near their train station. Is that included in this or discussed at all?
Definitely discussed. When we're doing Clinton's TOD plan, that's something that we've definitely discussed. It's something that's already existing and online. So I don't know if, Rob, you want to talk about some of the mapping that we've already done with existing conditions and then like the site, talk a little bit about the site selection process?
Yeah. So as part of this effort, we looked at a lot of these different existing conditions, including plans, development, and development that's recent or sort of underway. And so the TOD visions for each community will incorporate all these different elements. And through them, we'll create, or we will be identifying opportunity sites. And these will be areas that are essentially different parcels- And these will be areas that are essentially different parcels and or small areas that are um. Well-suited for transit-oriented development, whether it's through who owns it. Or uh its location to transit or the size of the parcel uh and its uh ability to accommodate um. Wastewater and those sorts of uh other issues that go into how you will build in an area like this. Uh, let's see if I have this. And so as we look at those and finalize adopting or identifying those opportunity sites, we'll be doing drawings for them. So they're they're not, so they're not going to be definitely what what will happen, but they're examples showing. How the vision could be implemented using these opportunity sites as case study examples. And so different strategies talked about in the vision plan will be illustrated uh by being applied to some of these opportunity sites.
And. Because like I look at the area right around the train, Old Saybrook Train Station, and most of that property is already owned. It's not like there's vacant land there. Would outreach to the current property owners and description of the kind of funding that could be available be part of this?
Um, so I. So this this will be, I I believe this will be shared and the the resources that we uncover and put into the plan will be publicly available and um, yeah.
Yeah, the thing to keep in mind about the vision plans is that they typically have a long time horizon. So they don't assume that something that is currently owned now will forever be owned by the same people under the same use. It's just something that we would like to see happen on the property. Um, you know, or see happen in the area. Uh, as far as soft site selection, you know. I assume because we've had public engagement sessions, we've invited all of the key businesses. To stakeholder meetings, um, we had the open houses, we'll continue to have more of those throughout. There'll be lots of opportunities for current po- property owners. Um, to participate and to provide comment and feedback. And also, as Rob said, you know, the funding resources are gonna be part of the adopted plan. So that's gonna be something that we put out there that's public, that um property owners would be aware of. And then if it's something that they're interested in, that's obviously a conversation between them and the town. But um if there's something that they're interested in pursuing from that, that's available.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add too, Megan, um, there's a couple of things that we've been talking about the planning committee most recently where um. They've been putting together sort of like a database of um relevant funding sources. And that is available to us at least through the um project timeline. And then perhaps as a group, we can get together and figure out a way to keep that updated so that we can share it. And the other tool that they've been putting together for us, which is something that we'll be able to use going forward is um. Uh, sort of a guidebook for creative capital stacking. So these are like some things that typically we don't have the manpower to do all the labor on. That will be very helpful if development opportunities come up.
Thank you. That is your question.
Yeah, yeah, I I'm looking at the uh plan development map in in our. Transit-oriented district is obviously cut in half by the train tracks. Um. Do we have any idea of what we're gonna do? Like, how do, how do we manage that, right? It seems to really reduce our options a great deal.
Zach, I believe you were on the call that we had where we talked about possibly putting a conversation together where we can get Amtrak in a room with us as well to talk about. And, you know, state DOT, Fed DOT, like get everybody together to talk about, you know, maybe. The difficulties of an up-and-over bridge or something on the train tracks. Um, part of what's great about the Thriving Communities Program. Is that it's supposed to provide us with access and resources to a whole host of people that we might otherwise have a difficult time getting a hold of. And that's definitely something that we're trying to explore. But Zach, Rob, I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
Yeah, so that's a challenge in each of these uh three shoreline communities. Um, between the railroad and I ninety-five, it makes it a little difficult for how you can fit in. Uh, transit-oriented development. Um, but at the same time, this is not only looking at development, but we're also looking at connectivity as as Megan mentioned. So looking at different ways of improving connections. Um, either through smaller steps or larger, more visionary sort of ideas. That may be longer-term plans. And also recognizing that, given these constraints, where is the most opportunity um today? So looking at our, when we're looking at our soft sites, we'll be able to say, these are the ones that. Uh, have the most potential now, but in the future, there might be others that could be online. Uh, and so it's working with what we have and thinking ways of how can we, how can we make improvements? But also not letting that restrict the possibilities for the areas that are accessible today. But it, but it is a challenge.
Uh, I'm really glad to hear you're looking at it. Uh, that, right, that's how it gets done is start somewhere uh and eventually it gets done one way or another. Thank you.
Is it, I have a question about some of the the connectivity here. I mean, would that be like, you know, adding, I guess, you're talking about bike lanes or like more as like where we should prioritize sidewalks or bike lanes in town? Would that be some of the things we would expect to see on here? Then I actually, I'm sorry for being like, yeah, I was actually taking transit from Hartford bus coming down here. It was thirty minutes late and there was traffic and all kinds of stuff. So we can talk more about improving the options of transit. It isn't just the housing around the transit at another time, yeah. But I, you know, even though I live in town here, it's like about a mile or so away from the train station. It's not the safest place to ride your bike to, because you have to go down Main Street or Route one. Or even just coming out of the train station, say someone was walking across the street in the dark. To get to the Sabre Station apartments, because there's not a clear, easy way to walk across there. So it's like in our transit area now is where it's not, that's kind of like basically we're sort of expecting to see from here is like. Where to put in sidewalks or bike lanes or which neighborhoods need to be connected because of the population density is already there or where to be improved.
So I'll let uh Rob speak to the exact, you know, planning and and land use aspects. But um going back to the the funding strategies that we had talked about. Um, one of, one of those resources that I think was already mentioned is, you know, fifty or so federal programs. Uh, we've put in a federal funding matrix. Um, and those include uh programs for safe streets, for complete streets. And being part of the thriving communities, um, there can be preferential treatment to receiving those grant awards. As well as additional capacity and putting those grant applications together. So while that may not be a direct result of being in thriving communities. It is one of those kind of attached pieces that comes through uh the funding strategies and capacity building.
Thanks, Zach. And yeah, so when we go back to the the three levels of TOD planning. Um, a lot of the work we've done so far is really identifying some of these um local destinations. And so part of the process will be, how do we connect these local destinations, places that people frequently go to, to the. Uh, transit corridor and to the transit stations. And so we'll be um providing recommendations on how to, how to make those sorts of connections. So that's what, so we're trying to illustrate with some of these green dashlines is. You know, how, we recognize that once you get to the station, you're gonna want to go to other places and they may not be that far. But um, conditions might not be quite there yet where it's comfortable for for you to to go there without having to drive. And so part of this will be looking at ways to improve those connections between the local destinations and the transit hubs.
Which would include sort of the complete streets, biking, walking kind of infrastructure improvement.
And we're going through that studies soon, aren't we, Megan? The complete streets?
Um, are you thinking safe streets and roads for all or?
I forget what what Chris had said.
We're doing all sorts of things.
Yeah, okay. But I know we're looking at that.
Uh-huh, yes.
Any questions or comments? Anyone else?
Yeah, this is just one of the questions I had about some of those sort of regional connections here and just the idea that most people who live in the region have to commute out. Does the data show like where they're commuting to? Like, do most of them go to New Haven or to Hartford or? Right, do we have that kind of information?
So we have that in the SEDs, um, it's on the map data from the census and it'll show you kind of the concentrations. It's a lot of people going to New London, a lot of people going to New Haven and a lot of people going to Hartford. And then Middletown is kind of, it's in region, but it's kind of like a sub job center that's smaller than the other three.
Yeah. I don't think there's as much professional employment in Middletown as there is Hartford, New Haven or New London.
Yeah, I said yesterday I took the bus up to, you know, Hartford, it goes through Middletown. Yeah, that's sort of the only way to get lower if you have the train that goes to New Haven, get into New London, it's even more difficult. Right. For me, so I know we're talking about transit-oriented development, is there any ideas of where do we need more transit options too? That'll make this development more appealing. I don't know if that's in the scope of this at all or or not.
It's continuing scope, so it's definitely part of our regional perspective and we're keeping it in mind as we're doing this because. You think about it, right? If our region has three kind of T or four TOD hubs in it. Then how nice would it be for us or for tourists to come and be able to jump from one to the other um without their car? So that's something that in the long term, we are thinking about. Um, I am subliminally putting Aqua Buses in people's minds. So it can be like Vancouver. I just keep mentioning it and I hope it'll stick one day.
What was the development you're doing on the River of Middletown? Think about it.
Yeah, um, you know, when we, as a region, we have some great tourist attractions right in the middle as well with. You know, we've got the Swing Bridge and we've got the Good Speed, um, Gillette's Castle, so you know, there's options.
We'll just have to get some duck boats, yeah.
Perfect.
So I I have a question. Um, so earlier you were talking about um approaching property owners. Uh, close to the transit area. So does that mean near the the train station, near the actual train station, you know, near Stop and Shop? And how far out is the radius? And when you say approaching property owners, does that mean business owners or does that mean residential homes? What, could you expand a little bit what that means?
Aaron, that was more of a question from me. Is that part of the plan? And my understanding is it's really not part of the plan to to directly reach out to people at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for clearing that up. I was like, okay, we're, yeah, all right.
Yeah, no, no, um, yeah.
Insofar as we want everybody's input on the vision, yes, but not in any um. Finite way, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. Thanks for clearing that up for me. I appreciate it.
Yes. Anything else? This is good information. I appreciate the time and effort you've put into it, especially Megan. She seems to be wearing many hats at the Rivercog. Um. If that's it, that's all we got tonight. So with that. I would ask for a motion to adjourn and I thank all our presenters for joining us this evening. Thank you. Always a favor. Bye. All right. Any other votes? All right. Have a good night.